Mr. Mayor, we just might need an extra minute.
Say, take the time.
We're just getting the interpretation done.
Yeah, take the time you need and I'll just look to you to let us know when to get rolling here.
Thank you. Fantastic. Thank you, Marcy. Welcome, Paige. Do you want to test your audio? One more time? You want to test your audio, Paige?
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't even hear you. Yes, can you hear me now?
Fantastic. Okay, if you wouldn't mind, go ahead and mute yourself and turn off your video until the item is called.
Sure thing.
Thank you. I see we have Eric. Anna, are you still with us or she logged off?
Can you hear me, Cindy?
Perfect. Thank you, Councilor Hall.
Thank you.
Okay. Just one moment. Councilor Chateau should be joining us momentarily, if not by audio.
Cindy.
Do you want to go ahead and start the meeting?
Yeah, why don't you just get started and she'll be able to jump in. So this is the City of Ca- I want to welcome folks to the City of St. Helena regular city council meeting Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. And we have a new feature here where on our agenda, we have estimated start times for items. And where these estimated start times are indicated, they are approximate and intended as estimates only and maybe shorter or longer as needed. And now I'll pass this back to our city clerk to help us with the remote access instructions and Spanish language interpretation instructions.
All right, to participate. For public comment by phone, you would dial 669-900-6833. At the prompt, you would enter the meeting ID, which is 812-9643-4330. You would press pound and during public comment, you would raise your hand and press star nine to speak. Tonight's meeting is, or tonight's meeting will have live Spanish interpretation. To access the interpretation, you will need to use a Zoom application from either your cell phone, tablet, or computer. Instructions on how to use the Zoom app are listed in English and Spanish on the agenda posted on the city's website. Once you join the meeting from the Zoom application, you will see a small globe at the bottom or top of the screen. Click on the globe and you'll be able to access the live interpretation. Marcy and Paul are our interpreters this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move now to our pledge of allegiance. And if folks would mute their microphones, place your hand on your heart and repeat after or repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move now to our roll call.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Here.
Councilor Chateau? I know she's present.
There it is. Hi, here. I'm just figuring it out on my phone for the first time. Thank you.
Councilor Hall?
Here.
Hardy?
Here.
Very good. We'll move now to our adoption of the agenda and I'll ask the city clerk if there are any changes to tonight's agenda.
There are none.
Seeing no changes, is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
So moved.
A second.
And a roll call, please.
Councilor Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. We'll move now to our public forum. This is where members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda during during this section. Each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendized item only once at any meeting. Brief questions by council members for clarifications may be posed and answered. And council members may make requests that items be placed on future agendas. But in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda. I'll ask the city clerk if there's any public comment at this point.
There are no raised hands.
Okay, we'll move from public comment to our reports by staff and city council, future agenda items and AB 1234 reports. I'll just make a mention here, I was away at the last meeting and heard good reports about the vice mayor leading the meeting with a sort of a new protocol in this section. Instead of going through each member of staff and council, asking if there are reports. What I'm going to do is just put it into two sections and ask first if there are any reports from staff. And see if we have any, and I'm seeing our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to update the council and the community on a couple of items. First, as you probably know, we've experienced a red flag warning, which means enhanced fire weather and conditions. And as a result, the city's fire department, which is typically staffed only 10 hours a day. We not only staffed it up, we staffed two full engines 24/7, beginning Sunday night at 7:00 PM. And the forecast was that this red flag warning would end at 5:00 PM tonight. We are monitoring a potential public safety power shut off that would begin approximately Thursday, perhaps run through Friday. As well as a potential red flag warning that would accompany that. So there is some concern about additional winds and potential fire type weather that's forecast for later this week. Our fire department is going to monitor these conditions and will be planning to staff up the fire station again for 24 hours a day until that danger is over. What that does is it really enhances our readiness and our ability to respond out of the station more quickly in those types of conditions. And additionally, we are scheduled, we are planning to schedule. It's not been formally set yet, but we're anticipating scheduling a special council workshop on Monday, November 15th. This would be a workshop that is on Zoom, beginning at 6:00 PM to discuss the future use of properties. City-owned properties at 1572 Railroad, that's our interim city hall property. 1480 Main Street, our police station, city former city hall property. As well as the Carnegie Building, which is today a little underutilized. So that workshop is planned for Monday, November 15th, and we'll be working on essentially posting an agenda in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm seeing a hand from our finance director, Dr. Miths.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to provide a reminder that we are still in our Phase Two water emergency. So just a plug for water conservation. Also wanted to make everybody aware that effective the end of October, the outdoor landscape irrigation actually does go away. So we are working on getting letters out sent, letters sent out to every water customer that we have. But just want to preemptive let people know out there that effective November 1st, that additional allocation is no longer there. So to keep conserving water because we're doing good right now. So thank you for everyone, your help in that effort.
Thank you very much. And now I'm seeing our planning director, Ms. DeRosa.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, our zoning code subcommittee is going to meet on October 21st at 1:30 to review the new materials that were distributed this week. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other updates from staff? Seeing none, we'll move now to our council and I'll ask if there are any council members that have any updates for us. I'm seeing council member Chateau.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
All right. Figured out the technical problems. So I wanted to report on two things. One was a request of council that I've already spoken with the city manager about. This is because I was getting requests at different times, but one more recently from community members. If we could look at doing the speed pillows, humps, bumps, there's different names now for traffic calming and slowing. And the idea would be to ask our fire chief to present, to look into it and come back and present something informational for all of us. And the idea could be that this goes to our active transportation and sustainability committee first. He could work and reach out to the Napa Bike Coalition, since I learned so much on that day that I went. And I know that they have resources, but the city staff could weigh in and then our fire chief could organize that and take it to a active transportation sustainability committee to have the community weigh in. And then it could come back to us if there's other council interest in this.
I'm seeing Mr. Doring with a thumbs up and a raised hand. I also support this. I think anything we can do to keep these speeds down and people driving in a moderate way. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you so much. And then really quickly, I just wanted to mention, I went down to the ribbon cutting in Napa for the Redwood Grove Affordable Housing Project. This is 35 homes that were built in a community altogether with Napa County, working with the city of Napa to make it happen. And it was really inspiring to see kids on bikes and them going next door to each other's houses. This was the move-in day and it was so, so cool just to see a solution happening and how this is going to be 35 families in Napa that are able to live in these homes and actually own them. And I hadn't seen something like that before on this scale and how well it was done. So that was a really interesting project as well.
Thank you. And I do, I do support that idea of building equity in projects like that. So thank you for presenting that. I'm seeing council member Hall. Council member Hall, we're having a volume issue.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of items. Mr. Rosa just touched on the zoning subcommittee, so I won't, I won't spend any time there. I didn't see Andre here tonight, but tomorrow night, there's a special Parks and Rec Commission meeting about the same time. To just sort of review the final activities for, you know, it's, it's harvest festival time, you guys. Saturday starts with the, with the pet parade at 9:30, okay? Oak Avenue. So well, hopefully everything is buttoned down. We'll find out tomorrow night. Also, one, one quick note, I just wanted to commend everybody involved in the, the Festa Italiana a week or so ago. Eight or 900 people all day, 10 to five at Lyman Park. A couple of dozen wineries were there pouring all day. Just a tremendous turnout. All of it volunteers, all the food contributed, all the wine, a great event. I want to thank Anthony McKelley, really is the backbone organizer of that event, as well as, of course, our Parks and Rec. Now we're Public Works, our permitting department and everybody else involved on the city side who, who helped Mr. McKelley pull this off. So just tremendous activity. And I was just reminded that there was this great informational board at the, at the event that day. And it was from the Historical Society and it covered early migrants to, to our city. Tomorrow, the Historical Society is going to be holding their, their first speaking series, I guess, at the, the Old Catholic School, their new location. Three o'clock tomorrow, also on Swiss Italian migration here to the Upper Valley. So that should be a good event. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. I'm seeing council member Chateau with your hand up.
I just wanted to say thank you to council member Hall because I saw how hard he was also working for that festa Italia. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports from council? Seeing no hands up, I'll just run through a few things here. Last week I went to the Flood Board, that's the countywide agency. One of the things they do is looking at conversations about procuring water resources. So there's an ongoing conversation with the Solano County Water Agency, discussing various water resources and potentials there. It's an ongoing discussion. Nothing is resolved at this point, but at least the conversation is there. I also went to LAFCO, which is the local agency formation commission last week. And, and tried to find out how to request a presentation of their countywide water and wastewater MSR Municipal Services Review. One of their recommendations was considering a more regional or countywide approach to water management. And I just made a request to see if they could come at some point to do a presentation here. So we'll wait to see if that can happen. Continuing with our community fire safe efforts, we're seeing some really good jumping in from community members all up and down the valley, really. But the communication and one of the silver linings of COVID is this Zoom technology. So on our fire safe efforts, that's helping coordinate efforts throughout the community. And then the, the conversation is then how to link in with our professional firefighters, our municipal firefighting teams. And make sure that our community efforts coordinate and work with those professional efforts. Want to continue our water conservation efforts. The community has been doing a remarkable job, but we have not seen rain really yet. We've seen a little bit, but not much. And so we want to keep behaving as if rain is not coming. We want to hope for it, but let's all keep up with conservation efforts. I want to take a moment just to honor my mother, Phoebe Ellsworth, who may be watching tonight. And has been a great community member here and a great source of inspiration to myself and others. So I just want to recognize her tonight. And then I'll touch on what council member Hall brought up, the Harvest Festival coming up this weekend. And that will have the pet parade, the, the fun run in the morning and then the street fair. So hopefully folks can come out for that. So with that, we'll move now into our, into our presentations and public recognitions. We'll start with item 7.1. This is our Sexual Violence Awareness Proclamation presented to Tracy Lamb, the News Executive Director. And I will read that. And Tracy, are you here to accept this? I saw you a little earlier. There you are. Let's see if I can bring this up here. Tracy, you can hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for being here. So this is the City of St. Helena Proclamation Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2021. Whereas News Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Services is commemorating 40 years of service to survivors of domestic violence in Napa County. Having opened the first confidential safe house on October 5th, 1981, and began providing safety to those escaping abuse. And whereas every year since 1989, the United States Congress has proclaimed October as Domestic Violence Awareness, Awareness Month. Renewing our country's commitment to standing against DV and meeting the needs of survivors. And whereas domestic violence is a public health concern that impacts the well-being and success of individual community members, as well as the community as a whole. Data from the U.S. Center of Disease Control's National Intimate Partner and Sexual Violence Survey show that nearly one in four women and one in nine men in the U.S. report experiencing severe physical violence from an intimate partner in their lifetime. While nearly half of U.S. adults have experienced psychological aggression such as humiliating or controlling behaviors from their partner. Domestic violence can cause severe, physical and emotional distress for survivors who are more likely to become suicidal and lose economic opportunities from the abuse. Children who witness abuse are likely to experience abuse themselves and are often used to control, used to control other family members who can have lifelong impacts on their mental health, which, which can have lifelong impacts on their mental health. Aside from the obvious physical and emotional trauma inflicted, domestic violence contributes to over 10% of all intentional violent deaths. Not including suicide and costs America over $8 billion a year. And whereas by observing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we show that our community is committed to supporting survivors and working toward the prevention of domestic violence among future generations. And whereas in fiscal year 2019, 20, News provided services to over 1,500 of our Napa County community members. Including 24-hour response, assistance with protective orders, safety and shelter, permanent housing, financial aid, support groups, and children's services for issues related to violence in the home. And now therefore let it be resolved that I Jeff Ellsworth, Mayor of the City of St. Helena and the city council members of the City of St. Helena do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And encourage all residents of the City of St. Helena to honor domestic violence survivors and those who serve them during this month and throughout the year. Thank you. Jeff Ellsworth, City of St. Helena. Tracy, do you have a few words you'd like to share with us?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth and members of the council for taking a few moments to commemorate our 40th anniversary and to think about this time of year, which is, you know, when we kind of take a special moment to think about domestic violence and sexual abuse happening in all of our communities. As you said, we serve, News serves about 1,500 people who have been affected by domestic violence every year. And unfortunately, the community of St. Helena is no exception. And we do know that it happens in all areas, all towns, all neighborhoods. And probably you know someone who's been affected by this issue. And, and so we, we just, we're proud that we've been here for 40 years. We hope that we will be here for another 40, but what we really hope is that we, that we can put an end to domestic violence and sexual abuse and not have a need any longer. So we're working really hard with prevention. We're in St. Helena schools, we're partnering with Police Department there and also with the Family Center and other entities to work together to provide resources to families there in St. Helena. So thank you again very, very much for taking this time. I know it's not a happy topic, but we really do appreciate your attention to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tracy. And we very much appreciate you being here this evening. So we'll move now to our item 7.2. This is October 17th to the 23rd. This is 20, the 2021 National Friends of Libraries Week. And this is a proclamation presented to Paige Polers-Meek, the Executive Director of the Friends and Foundation.
Thank you very much.
Are you, are you here?
I am. I'm here on this little screen.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, I'm, we'll get into the City of St. Helena Proclamation for National Friends of Libraries Week. October 17th through 23rd, 2021. I'll just make a personal note here. My mother was Phoebe, who I mentioned earlier, was a part of the Friends of Library for many years. So this is especially meaningful to me to read this evening. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Where, whereas Friends and Foundation, St. Helena Public Library raises funds that enables our library to move from good to great. Providing the resources for programming, additional part-time staff, needed equipment, support for the library's various reading programs and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends and Foundation highlights an ongoing base, on an ongoing basis, the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community. Providing opportunities for all, from the very young to the more mature, to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present, helping lead to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. And whereas the Friends and Foundation understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and encourage community support for the library, along with advocating to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials. Along with expert assistance and research, readers advisory and children's services. And now therefore let it be resolved that I Jeff Ellsworth, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, along with the St. Helena City Council proclaim October 17th to 23rd, 2021 as Friends of Libraries Week in St. Helena. And urge everyone to thank the Friends and Foundation for all they do to make our library and community so much better. And in witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of this, of the City of St. Helena to be affixed this 12th day of October, 2021. Thank you. And Ms. Meek, do you have a few words to share with us?
Yes, I would like to say thank you, first of all. Ever since I have moved here to St. Helena, about a year, a little over a year ago, I genuinely felt such a warm welcome by everyone in this town. It's such, it's, it's so noticeable. I can't really put it into words, but, and our donors and supporters of the library are just the same way. And I'm just, I feel really accepted in this community and I'm so touched by the generosity and just the enthusiasm about this library and which I'm very enthusiastic about myself. So thank you. And I'm always here. I'm an open door. You know, I'm always available by phone or email if you need to talk to me and have thoughts and ideas or questions or concerns. I, I welcome it all, no matter what it is. So if you're ever thinking of something or you have an idea, don't hold it at bay. Let me know. I just wanted to remind everybody that bookmark is coming up in January, January 30th. And I would love for everyone to try to come if they can. The, it's, we're open online. We're on our, it's on our website, supportshlibrary.org. And we also have just recently sent out our Fall Appeal with little bookmarks inside. So if you got that, there's information there. If you walk in the library, there's information about it there too. And also, if you like chocolate, Woodhouse Chocolate made a special chocolate in honor of Elsie the cat, which I don't know if you know this, but she lives at that library. She's really cute. And they made this chocolate cat and they're selling out every time they make a big batch, they're selling out. And everybody in the town is buying them. So it's really fun and it's benefiting the foundation and the library.
Thank you. We got a picture of the chocolate cat in our briefing this week from the city manager. And great to see that's all going to a good cause. So thank you.
Great. And then just lastly, go into Acres if you can in November. It's not a hard thing to do because it's a beautiful store. And they're going to have Elsie a blown glass ornament for sale for the holidays. So you get to continue the love of Elsie next month. So if you, if you can, go into Acres and look at the ornaments that we have for, for sale.
Very good. Thank you very, very much for being here.
Thank you.
And welcome to the community.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Okay, we'll now move through our proclamations here, presentations, and past our staff briefing, seeing none. We'll get to our consent items. And this is our section where members of the council or public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. I'm going to read through the numbers and if there's a hand up, I'll look to our city clerk and I'll look to our council as I read through the numbers to see if anybody wants to pull an item from consent. I'll start with item 9.1. And we will then move to item 9.2. And we will then move to item 9.3. Seeing no hands, I will then ask for a motion to pass the consent calendar.
Move to pass the consent calendar.
Second.
And the roll.
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. Very good. So we will move past public hearings, seeing none, we'll move into our old business, item 11.1. This is consideration and approval of an updated funding agreement with the State of California Department of Water Resources for the comprehensive flood control protection and and Flood Corridor Restoration Project. And this is our city attorney, Ethan Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is largely an administrative cleanup action that we're bringing to you this evening as a precursor to the item that comes immediately after it regarding the approval of the proposed conservation easement. As the mayor noted, the city previously completed its comprehensive flood protection flood corridor restoration project, a project that was initiated both to provide the city with flood protection and to additionally restore and maintain about eight acres of habitat immediately adjacent to the Napa River. As part of this project, we received about $2.3 million in funding from the Department of, the State Department of Water Resources through its Proposition 84 grant program and entered into a grant agreement for those funds back in 2009 originally, with some extensions provided to allow us to complete the project. While we received most of the funding through that grant program, there was a retention amount of about $237,000 that was conditioned on us completing the the full requirements under the project, which included completion of the conservation easement, which you'll consider immediately after this item. But the grant agreement, as we've been discussing, the conservation easement with Department of Water Resources, they noted that the original grant agreement expired in 2014. And so they asked us to enter into a new and updated grant agreement that would allow us until the end of this year to complete our obligations under the project. Once those obligations are complete, they'll release the retention for the city and we will receive the remaining funds that we have spent on the flood protection and restoration project. So we're proposing that you approve this updated agreement. The substantive terms are the same, other than changes to the scope of work to acknowledge that that the majority of the work is being completed and giving us the additional time to complete the last steps in this project. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the council.
Are there any initial council questions or input on this item? And I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor Ellsworth. A question for the city attorney is this. We have received some public comments suggesting that the carve-out in the conservation easement for a future extension of Adams Street may be in conflict with the grant. I wondered if you had any comments on that. Thank you.
Sure, it's my pleasure to address that. I was going to do that as part of the next item, but that's a good point. It could come up during this item, during public comment. So it's worth clarifying now. That was a point of discussion during the negotiations of the conservation easement. And just so you're aware, those negotiations were primarily handled by my predecessor here as the negotiations were largely done. You know, about a year ago, and this has just been delayed due to turnover at the city and other pressing projects. But that was one point that I believe came to the attention of the council because the location of the conservation easement is in a place where, under our general plan, we do have anticipated connections to Adams Street and one other that are contemplated in the general plan. And so as part of that negotiation, the city discussed the fact that that's a future possibility, that there would be new street connections at that point. And those connections could come into play later on as we're going through the process. And so we provided language in the conservation easement that would allow for us to, if those projects are to move forward in the future, we have a process that we'll go through to to secure additional habitat to ensure that there is no damage to the existing conservation easement and other protections. DWR has been a part of all the conversations on the conservation easement, and they have approved the form of conservation easement that we have, that we're bringing before the council tonight. So it is not in conflict with their requirements for the conservation easement and doesn't jeopardize our grant. They're very eager to see this move forward in its current form and being able to close out the bracket.
Thank you very much.
Any additional council questions or comments? So then we'll look to public comment. I'll look to our city clerk.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council and I had also, you know, received public comment with some concerns regarding the conservation easement and keeping the, in a sense of the ability to, if perhaps bridging had to go across, I think there ultimately are some safety concerns that we need to keep our options open. Choices certainly get made outside of our jurisdiction and pressures build, et cetera. And so I think as we move forward, having our options open, moving forward on this with those options, I think is important. Certainly want to protect our environment and our river, critical habitat, et cetera. But also believe we need to make sure that we're focusing on long-term options for the safety of our community and how things move here as well. So with that, I'll look, if there are no other council comments, I'll look for a motion on the recommended action.
Move approval of the staff recommendation.
Second.
And a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth?
Yes. And now we'll move then to our next item. This is the consideration, related item, a consideration and approval of a conservation easement deed between the City of St. Helena and the Napa County Land Trust in furtherance of the Comprehensive Flood Control Project. And again, we'll go to Mr. Walsh.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't muted. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So this is the actual conservation easement that we are proposing that the council approve with the Napa County Land Trust. So the conservation easement was a requirement of the original grant from DWR. And there was an expectation that in addition to the, as I mentioned, in addition to the flood control, there is, we engage in habitat restoration as part of this process. And so as a condition of providing us with those funds, it was DWR's expectation that we would ensure the preservation of those of the habitat in perpetuity. And so in order to ensure that that actually happens, they require us to enter into a conservation easement with an organization who's experienced in overseeing these, this type of conservation work. So this item has come to the council a couple of times before, although not to this current council for discussion and of the conservation easement. And as I noted, this would allow for conservation in perpetuity of the habitat that's in place and monitoring by the Napa County Land Trust. I did want to note, since there was discussion of the permitted streets and bridges that are allowed under the proposed conservation easement, that there is conditions that have been imposed on us as part of the conservation easement that would govern under what circumstances we would be allowed to move forward with that type of work. And specifically, if the council is interested in looking at it, it's at the top of page eight of the staff item for this. And it requires that the construction of any permitted streets and bridges under the conservation easement will require specific requirements put in place by DWR, including that the work done cannot encroach onto the levee prism and must be a material addition to the levee prism. Any new bridge must be shown to not impede potential flood flows or required to do an analysis showing potential settling that could occur due to traffic loading. And additional material would have to be added to the levee to account for that. An encroachment permit would have to be obtained through the appropriate state, federal, and local permitting requirements if we were going to go forward with that. And any permanent impacts to restored habitat areas within the conservation easement would have to be mitigated. So we would have to find replacement habitat at a three to one acreage ratio. And then any temporary habitat impacts would have to be returned to pre-existing conditions. So there are fairly stringent requirements to ensure kind of the integrity of the conservation easement area in the event that we do move forward with one of those, one or more of those street connections in the future, which, you know, will be subject to any future council action. We do have Lena Palastro with the Napa County Land Trust with us this evening to answer any questions that you may have. She's a a good resource for any council questions because she actually has been involved in this process from the duration of the time that we initiated discussions with them. So she's a real asset for any questions that you may have. So with that, I don't bid for any questions.
Very good. Thank you. I'll put it first to the council. Are there any questions? I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
I'm supportive of the approval of the conservation easement. I'm glad it's finally here after many, many years. I'm curious as to what, other than this conservation easement, what other work remains to be done to allow the release of the funds from the state.
So I will let Lena speak to that a bit. One thing that we have to do is provide, we have to develop a baseline study that shows the current conditions of the site. We need to get this document executed and we need to, we need to get it recorded against the property. And April may be aware of some additional administrative steps that need to be taken in order to actually secure those funds. But Lena, it might be helpful if you could give some insight onto the baseline study that you've been, that you've been working on or working on finalized now.
Thank you for having me today. The conservation easement, so the baseline report is a document that is done concurrently with the conservation easement to document the conditions on the property. A first draft of this has been completed and is for review with the appropriate city staff to respond. Once those comments are received and incorporated, the baseline for all intents and purposes is completed. There's no additional changes to the conservation easement. That would be completed, which means we could sign and execute all of these documents as soon as possible and get them done after the last seven years since we first started this conversation. I think to complete any other requirements from the Department of Water Resources, I do know that their staff needs to conduct a site visit. I'm not sure if that needs to happen prior to or immediately after the execution of the documents, but likely all at the same time. That didn't seem like it would be a loop-up to the process. So barring any unforeseen circumstances, this could close relatively soon and then whatever administrative work is needed to complete that grant with the Department of Water Resources likely the last piece of the team goes out in recent years.
Thank you. I'm seeing Vice Mayor with another question?
Yeah, I just, I'm curious, what are the funds that we're getting back, the $237,000 program for something else or for the sort of ongoing work that we're required to do? Or is that, yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
The funds are not currently programmed. My recommendation is because part of the funding that we receive from both SRF and I believe DW, for sure SRF with the state revolving fund loan, is we do have to keep a flood control maintenance account. So we have been, we should have been doing that the entire time that we had the state revolving fund loan with them. They never started it. Once I started about eight years ago, we actually started stocking about $50,000 away in that fund. And it's there to do the necessary maintenance repairs. And it was my recommendation is once we do get that retention relief, that we actually put those funds right into that maintenance fund. So we have it there and available.
Okay, thank you. That's my last question.
Any other council questions or comments at this point? I'm seeing none, so I'll look to our city clerk and see if we have any comments from the public.
We do. Nancy, you are allowed to unmute yourself and address the council.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm on a new computer. Is my sound coming through?
Yes, we can hear you.
First, I want to say I did contact the city and ask for my public comment to be retracted, and I got an acknowledgement. So I'm surprised to see it on there. That being said, I retracted it because when I delved into the details of this easement, I could see that you have indeed been working with the DWR and that there are pretty stringent hoops to go through in order to put the, what I'm going to call a freeway across the property, because that's what it will turn into. But anyway, especially when the tourists find out there's another end to downtown St. Helena. But I am curious about the requirement, the three to one ratio on lake habitat. Would that three acres have to be riverside property? Does it have to be within city limits? Would you look to buy that from a private party or how? Maybe this is a premature inquiry, but I'm just curious as to how you would meet that kind of criteria.
Ethan, do you have a comment or is this something we can circle back on? What's your thought?
Sure, I can. I guess I would say yes, I can, but why don't we finish public comment and then I'll respond. I believe you have another.
Okay, so we'll take another public comment and then our city attorney will circle back with a thought on that question for Ms. Durbin.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so this is Anthony. So what I'm hearing is that this is going to be a conservation area. There's also a new plan development and there's this new access to St. Helena. Is there any way possible to make an area around that a conservation area? And maybe like retain that for that sort of area? Is there any way to build that with conservation in mind? And maybe that can be part of that three to one ratio?
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. My suggestion would be to submit that public comment, that question, so that can sort of be incorporated into how this is thought about. I'm not sure our city manager can answer that on the fly, so to speak. Or our city attorney.
So I can, I can speak to both of the questions, but I would say, I think Nancy was correct, that it is a little premature for us to say exactly how we would, how we would deal with the, with the replacement habitat. I guess it would largely depend on, you know, what the project that we were doing looked like and what, you know, what level of habitat we were we were impacting. So, you know, if we were impacting one acre of habitat, then we would So, you know, if we were impacting one acre of habitat, then we would probably look, I mean, we may look to a mitigation bank, we may look to other property that the city owns where we could record a conservation easement. There may be area that we own that is adjacent to this where we could record additional conservation easement, something along those lines. But I, I think it would really be dependent on kind of the facts on the ground at, at the time that we were moving forward with any of these projects in the event we, we were going to do that. And I should emphasize that the, the only reason that we put this in is because those connectors are specifically contemplated as potential future connectors in our, in our general plan circulation element. So we, we saw, you know, we didn't want to approve a conservation easement that was inconsistent with our general plan. So we, we did want to, to factor in that possibility for the future. So, you know, it could be, it could be five years from now, it could be 10 years from now, it could be never. And so depending on kind of the, the, the facts and the circumstances at the time that we move forward on a project would depend on how we would decide to move forward with, with a mitigation measure like that. And with all of these, these are DWR requirements. And so I would expect that we would have to do them both in consultation with DWR and with the, with the Napa County Land Trust in order to make sure that we were ensuring the integrity of the, of the, of the site. As to Anthony's question, I think it's largely kind of the same response that it's, it's hard to say exactly how we would deal with the three to one mitigation, you know, in the event that this moved forward. And as part of that, I just did want to reemphasize, you know, there, there is, as part of this, there is no plan development. This is just something that is a potential future extension, not something that we are, that is currently underway, just something that is contemplated in our general plan that we may address in the future. So, you know, in the event that council later decides that's something that we're moving forward with, then we have to look at this much more carefully and drill down on how we would, how we would deal with these requirements.
Thank you. Appreciate that, that kind of summary of the issue. Are there any other council comments input at this point or any, any, I'll look to the city clerk. Is there any other public comment?
No hands raised.
Okay, and so we'll bring it back to the council. Any other council comment at this point? And I'm seeing none. And so I will then look to see if there is a, a motion on the staff recommendation.
Oh, hold on.
I'll second.
And a roll call, please.
Vice Chair Doring?
Yes.
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Elsour?
Yes, and Ms. Pelastro, I just had a question. As, as you look at this issue and being part of the land trust, I, I, just a question. Are we seeing a look at, as we go along the whole river and focus on restoration, et cetera, projects? Is there some mapping that comes through the land trust that can help us sort of understand how habitat is being looked at up and down the river and watershed area?
I actually think you're the best source for identifying habitat restoration potential and riparian vegetation along the Napa River is through the Napa Resource Conservation District or the Napa County Blood Control Program. They, they've both been actively involved in a lot of those river restoration projects from Rutherford Beach, the Oakville to Oak Knoll Stretch, and then also looking potentially at like the Bale Slough tributaries in the Napa River. So they've done a fair amount of mapping and even to some, you know, the engineering for the plans for those types of projects. I don't know how far north from Rutherford up to St. Helena that has reached or if it's going north of St. Helena into town center.
Thank you.
That would be, I guess that would be my first recommendation. I think, yes, at the land trust, we have mapping capacity to be able to look at those items. I'm not fully clear on what resources we might have that would differ from the Resource Conservation District.
Okay, but knowing that you're linked in with them and, and that those, those are places to start, that's very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thanks for being here this evening. Okay, we'll move now to our next item. This is item 11.3. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution affirming support for the Upper Napa Valley Blue Zones Project and appointing a council representative to serve on the Upper Napa Valley Blue Zones Steering and Leadership Committee. I was not here at the last meeting when this was presented, but I have a good sense of what it is. Mr. Presswich, do you have any input at this point with the staff report?
Sure, I'll provide a brief introduction. And, and there's a little bit of homework here for the council to appoint a council representative. So this is a follow-up to our meeting of September 28th, when the council received an update from the executive director of the Upper Napa Valley Blue Zones Project, Joaquin Razzo, about the Blue Zones Project in Upper Valley, Upper Napa Valley. And Blue Zones refer to communities around the world that have been recognized as having exceptional health and extreme longevity. Their mission is to empower everyone everywhere to live a better, longer life. And so they're in the process of a, a middle of a three-year initiative to launch a number of these blue zones around the country. And our area is designated as one of those. And a key component of these projects is to work with local governments, community leaders to understand key issues and work to identify as well as implement policy changes that helps support some of the findings that the Blue Zones Project has been working on. And tonight, the project is seeking a council representative to serve on the, the project's steering and leadership committee. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And I believe we also have a representative available from the project in case you have additional questions.
Thank you, and I'll certainly be open to council input. But I had heard from the, the previous meeting that Vice Mayor Doring had expressed interest in this. I'd certainly be supportive of that. I think he's got a full set of skills that I think would be a tremendous benefit to having the city, he be our liaison. But, so I'd like to put that forward, but certainly willing to take council input if, if there's other interest. So I'm not seeing any other hands. And so is there council support for Mr. Doring being our liaison?
There is here.
I'm seeing, and I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau, and I'm seeing.
Yeah, hands up. He'd be great.
Okay, wonderful. And do, we do have a representative from Blue Zones here?
We do, and it would also be appropriate to receive public comment on this item.
Oh, very good. So why don't I open it to the, our, our Blue Zones rep who's here, and then we'll open it to public comment?
All right, the representative can unmute themselves and address the council.
All right, I think you guys can hear me, but thank you, city council and mayor and vice mayor and city staff. We're excited to be partnering with you, with, with the city and the Upper Napa Valley as well as the other cities, as well in the other Upper Napa Valley and look forward to working with you and appreciate, fully appreciate the support moving forward too.
Wonderful. Thank you for being on, and we'll open it now to public comment.
Okay, just a moment. Anthony, you're unmuted. If you could address the council.
Great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for being on.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
There's none.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council and looks like we have support for Mr., for Vice Mayor Doring as our liaison. And I just want to say that working with, with Blue Zones, working with Adventist Health, these kinds of partnerships are, just make us stronger by working together. So we really appreciate this, this opportunity. One of the, the great things about this is it ties in with our health initiatives, our infrastructure initiatives, our community initiatives. I think we can build a lot of networks and, and bridges to moving forward together. So with that, if there's no other input, I'm going to see Mr. Doring, council.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the council's support and confidence in me and being nominated to this position. I've been thinking about concepts centered around Blue Zones for many, many, many years, frankly, before Blue Zones was Blue Zones. My brain takes me to all kinds of different linkages, and I can see this as a, a huge opportunity for the up valley in so many ways. Health and wellbeing has always been sort of a part of my thinking, lived from a lived experience. And so much work to be done here. I can see this becoming a Blue Zone element in our general plans. If we really get sophisticated, we can lead the nation in this kind of a project. So I'm excited about it and happy to take on the role. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and we know that all our council members have many committees and many jobs that we all do. And thank you for taking this one on as well. So thank you. And.
Do we need a vote on that, Mayor? Or?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I will ask then for a, I will ask then for a nomination, or I make the nomination and then we do the vote. Is that right, Cindy?
Adopt the proposed resolution and appoint a council member to the Upper Valley, or the Upper Napa Valley Blue Zones Steering and Leadership Committee.
So do we do that in one motion or two?
One motion.
Okay, so is there a, I will, I will make the motion with the nomination to adopt the proposed resolution and appoint Vice Mayor Doring to the Upper Napa Valley Blue Zones Steering and Leadership Committee.
Okay.
And a roll call, please.
Mayor Elsour?
Yes.
Councilor Chateau?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. So now we'll move on to item 11.4, and this is informational report on our City Hall Police Station relocation to Napa Valley College Upper Valley Campus. And I see this is prepared by Ms. Nixon is, I see you here. Great. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Priya Nixon. I am the assistant to the city manager and the lead project manager for the move to the Napa Valley College Upper Valley Campus. I, first of all, like to thank all of you for your leadership in making this exciting move happen. What I'm going to do tonight is provide two screen shares. I'm going to share a little bit of background on what the space looks like in terms of how we've divided up where people are going to be. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about the timeline. So, and I'm going to try and make it as, as, as easy to read. There's going to be a lot of things you're going to see on my screen. So you should be able to see a layout. Is that, can you see that, Mayor Elsour?
Yeah.
Okay, so the city has hired Nolan Tam Architects to be the lead architect firm to develop the tenant improvements. And this is a layout, and there's two components that I'm going to explain. So the first is, I know this is, I'm going to try and move, move as best as I can. So it, for those of you who have been to the site, there are two buildings. We're actually only in one of the buildings, which is the main area where the classrooms are. So it's, it's not the culinary building. And we've divided this project up into basically the police wing and then the administration wing. And I just wanted to go over and share with the community and with, with everyone what that looks like right now. So right here, you'll see that we have, this is our administration wing. And I just wanted to show this will be where we'll have our utility billing and our front-facing customer service staff. And we'll have a lot of the administrative staff here, so the city manager's office and the administrative services department as well. And one of the really great things about this move is that we're actually going to be sharing it a little bit with our friends at the college. And so we have developed a space that we'll be using for human resources. And this will be actually shared with, there'll be a wall that we're, that we will be installing. And this is out of the scope of the, of where we'll be moving in. But this will be a room that we're actually going to be sort of building out. And so I say this because we're actually not, we're, the, the space is actually set up pretty well already in terms of offices. So there's not a lot of changes that we're making in the administration area. This is one where we'll be adding a wall and adding an actual office. But there's already this awesome existing space and we'll be getting, you know, a nice coat of paint, but it's, it's really set up for us. So that is the main administration area, and then this is the lobby. And then for those who, who have been to this space, there's this gorgeous library. And it is set up to be our planning and building and public works and engineering area. We'll have some of public works over in the administration side. But again, this space has a lot of great areas already. We will be actually only adding in one wall here for one office. And I just got word from the college that they have already started moving out some of their items. So it will be a beautiful space for us to add in some of our existing furniture that we have. Again, there'll be some minor tenant improvements that we'll be making, but really we're just adding a main wall here. So that's really the bulk of the administration side. A few other things that we're doing that I'd like to point out is we're going to be outfitting the, there's a break room that we'll be adding to and outfitting a little bit more, adding an actual wall and a door. And this is right now, it's sort of an open space. And then we have an area for a conference space so that we can gather and work together. And this actually allows us to kind of configure the space as we see, as we need it to be. So it could be a conference room. It could also be a place where if we had a consultant, they needed to come in and use that space. So I'll make it a little bit bigger. So that will be, I think that space will be used very much, which is really great. So I now want to talk just a little bit about our exciting police renovations that we'll be making. And for those of you who, I'm, I'm learning about this, but when you're adding infrastructure for a police department, you have to do some special things. So it's going to take a little bit longer, but I think this space, once it's ready, it's going to really fit the needs of the department. So we will have a dispatch area here. We have a restroom, and that will be new. And then this will really be locked off as it is now in the current police department. And then we'll have an area for administration. So where the chief of police will have his office and some sergeants and our lieutenants as well. And then at the very end of the building, there's this really cool, it's currently a science classroom, but we are going to retrofit it and make it into a training room that will also serve as a briefing room. And it's going to be set up with some really nice tables. So it will be multipurpose. There'll be some areas to do some report writing. So it really has, it's, it's a great space if you, if you haven't seen it. Another important thing I just want to add about the police is that we will be actually placing here a modular, which will serve as a locker room and a shower room. And so that will be, it's not part of this plan set here, but we will add that. And then I'm going to zoom out just a little bit because one of the really exciting things about this space is that we have so much outdoor space that we'll be able to use. And we have some patios here back where the planning and building department is. There's a whole courtyard, and we really anticipate using that, using those as spaces to have meetings as well. So I think that's a huge benefit. As with any tenant improvement, there'll be other changes that we'll be making. So we'll be working on some IT upgrades that we'll have to do. There will be some ADA upgrades that we will be doing in the parking lot. And I'd just like to give a really big shout out to Nolan Tam Architects, who really helped put this together and take all of our feedback. And so I'm really, I spoke to the city manager Presswich today about this, and we're really excited about this. really excited about this, about this move. It's happening. And so I'm going to segue into my next screen, which is, I know this, this might be hard to see, but this is our timeline. So I want to just, it's broken down into a few components, and I want to let everyone know where we are. So anytime you're doing significant improvements to a building that is owned by a community college, you have to go through the Division of State Architects, which is, which is part of getting our plans approved. So what we've done is we've created the plans that I just showed everyone, and we submitted them to the state architect. And we did that in September. That was a huge milestone. And now the Division of State Architect is actually reviewing our plans. So we're in the DSA review. So we don't actually know how long that's going to take. I did speak with the architects today, and they actually, they are, there's a process of review, and they are actually about halfway through. But it's sort of, once they provide their comments, we'll have an opportunity to provide our comments, and we don't know how long that will take. So what we've done is we've decided to allocate around three months for that. It could be finished sooner. It could maybe take a little bit longer, but they are reviewing what we've submitted. And so concurrent with that, staff is looking at the procurement side, which is putting the project out to bid. And that's really important, because that will allow us to then actually do the tenant improvements. So staff is actually going to be hopefully meeting next week to talk about what does that schedule look like, who needs to be part of those conversations? And then, once we put this project out to bid, we will obviously anticipate awarding that bid. And, okay, I'm going to try my best to show you this, but this blue area right here is in the construction phase. And so right now, this schedule puts us in moving in in middle of the spring, but that's really a placeholder. We don't know if we will get the approval from the DSA sooner, and we don't know. So that will sort of impact when we go up to bid. So we're really excited about this this timeline. This makes it real, getting our plans submitted to the Division of State Architect was really important, and it's really exciting to know that they are actively reviewing what we've submitted. And I would just like to say that one of the really interesting things about this project is that is a true collaboration between a community college and a city. And the folks at the Napa Valley College have just been absolutely wonderful to work with, and they're very excited about this. And so I'd like to thank them, and I'd like to thank city manager Press Switch, and then our city engineer, Mr. Rincon, for all of their amazing support in making this happen. We had a lot of feedback. It was really exciting to have city staff go over to the college and to identify some of the items that we'd like to keep there. So I'd just like to thank everyone, and that concludes my presentation. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you for that presentation. That was very helpful in helping us sort of understand where we are in the process. So I think it would be safe to say that city staff is looking forward to moving from the Railroad Avenue building to the college building.
Yes.
Right. Good. So is there any council input at this point? I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau.
I just have a quick question. Will city staff be moving over before the police department?
So that's a great question. Thank you for asking that. As I mentioned, that with some of the requirements that we have to make with the upgrades to the police department, we do have a little bit more time to allow for those upgrades. So we do anticipate potentially moving in the administration side earlier. I think the construction will take less time for that. We're still, we're still sort of working on all those logistics. That's a really great question.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, too. Good job.
And I had an additional question. If will there be any space if, say, a council member wants to schedule a meeting with a community member? Will there be space at the the new building for for that, something like that to occur?
Yeah, so that, thank you for asking. That conference room that we have allocated, that will be a great space. I think we've identified a table that we can put in there, and that will be used for meetings exactly like that, and also the outdoor space as well.
Great. Thank you. And I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
Thank you for the presentation. Very organized and well done. Could you just comment briefly on potential uses of the out of scope areas that you pointed out?
Yes. Thank you so much for asking. That's great. So the college has some classes that they use in their art room, so it's a big glass. It's actually a beautiful space, and they'll be using that for some of their classes. However, in our lease, we also have the option to use that space. So I actually anticipate that we'll have some of our committee meetings. So I'm really looking forward to having our Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee meetings there. And the college is actually set up, we're working on setting up a process for how the city can use that space. But thank you so much for reminding me to comment on that, because while the college will be using that somewhat, we'll also be able to use it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other council comment at this point. I'll open it to community or to public comment at this point.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the council, and this was simply informational, as I'm seeing, and very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good and good to have you back, Priya.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move to our item 12.1. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution temporarily waiving sign fees for business recovery. And this is Ms. DeRosa, our Planning and Building Director.
Thank you. Is my volume okay?
Yes.
Good. I'd like to start by thanking Councilmember Chateau and Hall for bringing this suggestion that we look at ways to help unencumber our businesses that are trying to recover from COVID. And that is part of what this proposal tonight is to discuss, is helping to streamline the way we review businesses with permits. How do we reduce our fees? How do we just become more business friendly? So the briefing tonight will be really short. The proposal is to, related to our signed permits, is to waive those fees for a temporary period of time through June 30th of 2022. Currently, and this information's in the staff report, the fee to obtain an administratively approved signed permit is $500. And then for a planning commission signed permit, that's $1,000. The feedback that we've received this year from some members of the community is that obtaining a signed permit has been definitely an economic constraint to them being able to open because of those fees. And those fees don't actually include, in some cases, a building permit is required as well. So we'd rather add, as you know, incentives for businesses to come here rather than to add impediments for them to open. And staff also finds that this proposal is consistent with the business recovery strategy that was brought to the council in September. Process-wise, if the city council did approve this resolution, those that still, you know, would have to go through the signed permit process and meet the code requirements, they just would be exempt from having to pay any fees along the way in that process. So our staff recommendation is for the council to approve the attached resolution to the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any input or questions from council at this point? I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau.
I just wanted to say thank you and our, and Ms. DeRosa, you said it better than I ever could. So thank you for outlining all those reasons.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. And certainly thank you to the council members for working on this. All efforts towards business recovery as we move through these phases of COVID, very much appreciated. I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
Thank you. I'm generally supportive of this for the reasons stated. I was wondering whether there was some discussion at the subcommittee staff level about different options in terms of waiving it all, waiving all the fees versus maybe waiving half the fees? Was the motivation to spur business? I'm not sure it'll help, but what's the thinking in terms of reducing fees versus eliminating all the fees altogether? Thank you.
I don't know if any of the councilmembers want to jump in on that. I think we we know this is low hanging fruit, because first of all, we don't get a lot of signed permits. And we also know that we want to eventually update the master fee schedule and probably maybe do some benchmarking and really look at what what should we be charging for our signed permits? And what is, you know, at what level is it really just too much to charge? And how and and as the director, I would actually like to see how we can streamline our permitting process and in some ways, combine the building permit with the signed permit rather than having people to, you know, apply for that and then have to wait and get another permit. So there's, that's just some general feedback I have. But again, I'd like to see if any of the councilmembers have any feedback for councilmembers.
I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau and then Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. So my thought and what we talked about is we want to make it as easy as possible for a business to come in and want to be on our Main Street, knowing that we have a large number of the open spaces. And we want to be competitive, knowing that there's other places that they can go. And this is one thing where we can say, hey, we're, we're taking a step and we're making a difference to make it easier for businesses to come here and choose us, because we know we're fantastic, and we have this gorgeous historical, unique building blocks right here on Main Street, and we want you to be here. And this is something that we can show that we're making it easier for them and also making it easier. And the cost, what we asked was how how significant is the cost? And you'll see in the staff report that it came back as looking at how many people have gotten the signed permits. I think it was seven, if I read it correctly.
Seven.
It's not a significant cost, so let's just do this while we wait and have more input for the user fee study, and we can work out those nuances that you're asking about.
And I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I would just echo everything Ms. Chateau just just mentioned. I think this is something that for the city is is a very minor item. For a small business owner operator who's trying to get up and running with many different irons in the fire, including trying to find staff to to run a business, this is actually an impediment, and it's a it's a sizable pain. So I actually would like to see the 2022 date pushed pushed back to 2023 if possible, simply because we're not talking about opening an existing business. This is perhaps setting up a new business. It's a long, drawn out process. So if we're doing, you know, 10 of these a year, we're talking about maybe an 18-month period here. So maybe it's 2020 permits, I guess, something like this. So, you know, that that would be my my input, I think. I think we we should resolve to do this, and if we can extend it, that would be a big plus.
Excellent. Thank you for the input. And I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. Well, I think this is a great step forward. I'm often reminded when we touch on subjects having to do with welcoming business to St. Helena that that, you know, we'd spent about 30 years earning a reputation as being either hostile or indifferent to business. So I think we have to expect that a lot of consistent effort will be required to really change that reputation. We didn't, we didn't get it by accident. This is an excellent step forward, and and I want to encourage everyone to continue to look for additional opportunities and ways to really communicate effectively and and in terms that are meaningful to business owners, that St. Helena has a new perspective, a new attitude. And 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 again, I'm always wanting for us to answer the question of why should a business locate here? We we need to think like the person we want to have come here. I think we have so much experience of what a great place this is to live in, that we may tend to assume too much about what it's like to do business here. So those are my thoughts. I'm really happy to have this on the agenda, and I support it wholeheartedly. And also, I think consideration of some additional time as proposed by Councilmember Hall is a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation, but to come back in 12 months with the idea of extending it an additional 12 months. We'll have more information at that time. I'm fairly receptive to that, but I'd rather wait to see how things are going. And I do, I would just, I I believe in, all the comments were made are very cogent. I just would want us to also balance that with the need to cover our basic costs. And I think that 12 months will give us enough time to kind of determine what those basic costs are. So that's why I
Vice Mayor Doring, I'm looking on the on the resolution. It goes through June 30th, 2022, so I think we'd have to revisit before 12 months. My thought, and I also concur, that looking at an extension is valuable. I'll look to the city manager to suggest a way or when that can come back for us to consider after after we, you know, move forward with this. Am I reading this correctly?
Right. The resolution is written, the waiver would expire on June 30th, 2022. And so it's important that we capture the vice mayor's motion accurately. If the motion is to, I think the motion is to adopt the staff recommendation, which would be the June 27, the June 30th, 2022 date. And what we would plan to do is then reconsider, I want to make sure I understand the motion, Vice Mayor Doring. We would, at that time, prior to the expiration, bring forward an item presumably in late June that would evaluate potential extension for 12 months. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Thank you. I misunderstood. Thank you. And did I see a hand from Councilmember Hardy?
I lowered it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So with that, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Oh, I'm going to take public comment. And I'll look to our city
There are no raised hands.
Okay, very good. We'll bring it back. We have a motion on the floor, and is there a second?
Second.
And roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Chateau?
Yes.
Mayor Eldred?
Yes. Very good, and we'll want to keep this work going as we work towards, you know, full recovery from COVID and moving forward in supporting our businesses. With that, we're coming to the end of our meeting. Unless there are any additional comments from the council or the staff, I'm just going to remind folks to stay firewise and fire safe as we move, sort of linger here in the dry period, and we, as I said, hope for rain, but we operate as if maybe it won't come. And so we want to stay focused on our water conservation and our fire safe efforts. Really appreciate the engagement from the community, the staff, the council, all working together. So thank you all very much, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.